It's live.
Okay, Mr. President.
Good morning and welcome to today's Mobile City Council meeting and we're gonna, as usual, turn it over in the hands of our very capable city clerk.
This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, September 1st. We'll have invocation by Dr. Vincent L. Robinson, Wright Way Christian Church. Please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
City Clerk, City Council, pray Father, we thank you for today's meeting and we invite you into this meeting. We ask you to guide our affairs and our decisions. Ask you to bring unity and growth to our city, our mayor and the city council, the wisdom and the knowledge that they need, Father, for the growth of our city. We thank you for a city of one where we are better, we are bigger, and we are stronger, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then we remain standing for a moment of silence, please, for the father-in-law of Councilmember Gina Gregory, Mr. Murray Gollum.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I might?
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate the moment of silence and the condolences that I've received from everyone. My father-in-law was 95. He was in the Merchant Marines and served in the Atlantic during World War II, moved to Mobile from Brooklyn, New York, worked with his uncles doing Dolphin Construction. For those of you who've been around Mobile for a very long time, you might remember Dolphin Construction. And after that, he was a door-to-door salesman. Now, you know somebody who could make a living and do very well at door-to-door salesmen, what kind of personality a man like that would have to have. And Murray was quite a character, and he will be sorely missed by his family. Again, he died on Sunday, and we're still going through some of the arrangements now. My husband is with his mother today, so I'm just really appreciate all the prayers and condolences that we've received.
All right.
Thank you, Mrs. Henderson. We would certainly keep your husband and the entire family in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you.
Roll call, President Manzi.
Here.
Vice President Small. Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Again, good morning. We are appreciative of each and every one who is reviewing us during this particular Zoom meeting. The meeting rules are as follows. We'd first ask that everyone would silence all of their electronic devices before or upon entering the council's meeting. We have the ability to meet electronically due to some leeway given to us by the governor of Alabama, KIAB, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, where every person has an ability to view this meeting by the city of Mobile's livestream. And if they have any questions or interrogators, they're asked to direct those to the city clerk's office, which will then be disseminated to all members of the council. Any person desired to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you would like to be heard. All of your commentary must be pertinent to city of Mobile business. If it's not, then you won't be allowed or granted an opportunity to speak. Speakers are allowed five minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. Additional bell will sound at the end of that fifth minute, which indicates that all of the time has expired. Addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements have to be made to the chair, to myself, and then I will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain the call, which is just a little easier here on Zoom, there will be no undue applause and or public outcry allowed. Again, thank you for your interest in the city of Mobile's business, and I'll turn it back over to our city clerk.
Approval of minutes of August 25th. So moved?
Second.
Been properly moved to second. Any discussion? Great job. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? I didn't hear but two ayes, so. Let's try that again. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
We have a presentation from Councilmember Rich.
Thank you. This is a proclamation, and I'm honored to be able to read this on behalf of the council. Whereas every September, we mark Childhood Cancer Awareness Month to educate and bring awareness to this issue and highlight the need for more funding and research. And whereas statistics show that one in every 285 children in the United States has cancer, every two minutes, a child is diagnosed with cancer, and more children are lost to cancer in the United States than any other disease. Yet less than 4% of the National Cancer Institute research budget is allocated to cure childhood cancer. And whereas resources in Mobile to help children with cancer include treatment at USA Children's and Women's Hospital, fun activities at Camp Rapa Hope, funding events such as Joy of Life and the yearly event Operation Superhero conducted by the Mobile Police Department, where SWAT team members rappel down the side of the hospital dressed in superhero costumes during a bell-ringing ceremony in celebration of each child completing their treatment. Whereas this year, with the additional challenges presented as a result of the ongoing pandemic, it is more important than ever that we acknowledge the devastating impact these diseases have on too many young people and their families, and provide much-needed support to them through the many organizations that serve them. Now therefore, I, best rich, council member of District 6, along with all the members of the Mobile City Council and the mayor, do hereby proclaim September 2020 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Mobile, and urge all our citizens to keep these childrens and families in your heart, not just this month, but every month, and support the many organizations serving them. Done at the city of Mobile, Alabama, the first day of September 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rich. Well-intentioned and certainly a cause that we need to continue to support as greatly as we can.
Yes, and I hope that our Facebook page will remind people of this month being important to childhood cancer awareness. So thank you very much.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see everybody's picture on the screen. My computer's having a glitch, so I'll just speak to you. Last night, we had a, what I thought was a very good meeting, a Zoom call, Facebook contact by Africa Town. Had 80-plus people on the call from around different parts of the country. Lot of continued interest in Africa Town, not just by Mobilians. So we have the local stakeholders that were all listening to the update. And so it's very good to see the continued enthusiasm and optimism that we have for the things that are going to happen in Africa Town. Also, earlier this week, Alabama Power Company and the mayor's office announced what was going on with the lighting contract with Alabama Power Company, where we were replacing all of our street lights with a new LED light. So we're just changing the heads out on it, but it will certainly make all of our neighborhoods and all of our streets brighter because you have a wider light. There'd be less operating expense, less maintenance going forward. Something like 26,000 lights totally. They've probably done in the neighborhood of 2,200 right now. The project could take as long as 16 to 18 months. But anyway, it's a real exciting opportunity to collaborate with Alabama Power Company to make the city of Mobile safer because we think lighting does is a deterrent to crime, certainly in some areas. On another note, we, maybe you witnessed us sending off our urban search and rescue team, which is also known as Alabama Task Force One. We sent them to Louisiana in response to the damage that was getting ready to be done by Hurricane Laura. So they deployed. They've evidently done what they are trained to do, because we've gotten worried that today they will be demobilized and coming back to the city of Mobile. So we were glad to be able to participate in some small way of sending that team. And I think it was about 35 people on the team, 23 of them were part of our fire rescue team. Anyway, we look forward to having another good week. Appreciate what the city council's doing, so let's go get them.
Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, I would like to ask the mayor a couple of questions. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. So much for the updates. I have a question. I heard that you said that you always had a Zoom meeting on last evening and had different stakeholders from around the country or world. I can't remember which one it was. Is that public knowledge who those stakeholders are or not?
Nitra Henderson sitting right here, and she can answer that question.
Yes, so we've had, of course, a lot of interest after the founding of the Clotilda. And so some of those stakeholders included some of representatives from the Smithsonian, Vanderbilt University, University of Texas, and different colleges and institutions that have been with the Africa Town community over the past months, were on the call just to listen, to see the updates that are going on from the city.
Do you also have like the Sierra Club, Club Engineers, is that right?
Yes.
Yep. Counsel, we have a slide that would show who some of the partners are in that.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, also, could you tell us what is your vision for the African Town area with the founding of the Clotilda, Clotillas, excuse me? Because we know that Birmingham has a well-known African-American museum. At Birmingham, Montgomery, a couple of years ago, had opened up a lynching museum, which many people from around the country had traveled to Montgomery. Matter of fact, I had some friends last month came all the way from New York to come to the lynching museum in Montgomery. And people have really just been going and found it very interesting, the lynching museum in Montgomery, and it has grown a lot. And knowing that, you know, Montgomery has something, that Birmingham has something, where do you see us heading, you know, probably the next couple of years with this, you know, action that was taken last night, you know, and everything?
So I see no reason that we shouldn't be able to capitalize on the founding of the Clotilda, being able to tell that story, just as the story is being told in Montgomery. And so part of, let's say, part of that vision, CJ, is making sure that we have a collaborative effort partnering with people like the Smithsonian Institute, National Geographic, Sierra Club, and so forth, but also our local representatives. You know, right now, we have a, Nitra, it's a redevelopment authority actually been set up. No, it's not been set up, okay. But anyway, so my idea is, is that I think it should become a tourist area. And there's a lot of work that's got to be done. I mean, we've got to do a lot of cleanup in that area. We've got to eradicate some of the blight for that. And so Nitra is actually, at this point, she's heading that up, and we're partnering with the county, you know, to bring focus to that. And so my vision is to capitalize on the assets that we have here, meaning Africa Town itself, the founding of the Clotilda, and take that and create a narrative that's acceptable to the community and those partners that are involved. Tell that story because I think it's a huge, it's not only a good story, it's a huge opportunity for tourism, maybe the biggest opportunity for tourism in the city of Mobile.
If I...
Thank you.
If I could expound, Mr. Vice President?
Yes.
I think it's important for the mayor to have a vision, of course, in alignment with our vision. But what we've got to do is, at all times, be cognizant and respectful. And I know Ms. Henderson is working hard at trying to reach that consensus of cognizant and respectful of what the community's vision is going to be as it relates to the build-out of Africa Town. I would love to see some semblance of a replica built of that ship. They've got ideas and plans of an amphitheater, waterway. If you listen, you know, there are about 20 different groups out there. All of them have in their head what the endgame will look like. And so I know Ms. Henderson is working hard. I'm working hard. The mayor's working hard to try to make certain that what is finally developed out there is not only respectful to the history and the culture of the citizens of Africa Town, but is also a draw so that hopefully your friends will want to come here instead of going to the museum there in Montgomery. And I'm appreciative of your continued interest, and it's going to take all of us on the council. This isn't just the District 2 issue. It's a global item. For us to be able to herald that the last slave ship of that 400-year period landed here, and they survived. They persevered. They thrived. They built churches. They built schools. They built their community and added economy until they were just horrendously taken over by industry. So we have, we have an awesome opportunity. I think working toward a full-scale replica is something that we ought to shoot for, and I will be working toward, hopefully, bringing that dream into fruition.
Yeah, Mr. President. Yeah, and I do agree with you, Mr. President, 100%. And it's just not a District 2, it's actually, you know, a city of Mobile regional thing because...
That's right.
People and, you know, they're spending tax, you know, money into the city of Mobile with the restaurants and the hotels. I mean, that's a beneficial, not just for District 2, but really for the whole city of Mobile. Because again, even with our CIP, you know, our CIP program is coming from the extra one cent sales tax. And that's money that's out there that we can be getting and putting back into our own districts and everything. So again, I do agree with you. It's not a District 2 thing. It's actually a city of Mobile, an original thing for our area. Thank you.
I totally agree with you, Mr. Vice President. Every district can claim hold to Africa Town. And I'm going to herald that at my next community meeting. I'm going to let them know that we've got six other eyes willing and hands and hearts and pocketbooks willing to come on into the community and lift them up. I welcome, I welcome the inclusion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Count me in on that. I would just like to say that I am an indirect descendant of the Clotilda, and that Osie Keeby was on the ship. His great-granddaughter was Helen Keeby. Helen Keeby married my daddy's brother, William Richardson. And from that group, they had about six siblings to children come from that group. So I'm speaking on behalf of all the Keeby descendants. Mr. Mayor, I would like for us to go beyond Africa Town. I would like to see the city of Mobile go up to 12 Mile Island, where the Clotilda went down. It's not in nobody's district. It's not, it's not in the city of Mobile, not even in the city of Mobile. Those people who was coming there in the ship knew that the river was blocked. So they went up, probably to Bowling County, to get on the Spanish River, took the Spanish River, river down to the 12 Mile Island. And then they let those 210 people off. My understanding is that men had been having the clothes on, it was all chained together, and they dumped them off in the swamp. And then they burned the ship. And then they went home for several days to let the law enforcement people move away from the river. And then went back up there to pick them up. And that's where I think the city needs to stake its ground to the spot where they were let off. We can, we can go up there, purchase the land where they let them off, just a piece of land for us to build an observation center. It can be all in glass, and then let somebody go out in those swamps and have figurines of those people, mannequins, or whatever you want to call it. Children all chained together out there in the swamps, have some snakes, electronic snakes crawling, have some electronic alligators out there. Or whatever you, whatever you can find in the river today, let, have some of that out there and have those people all crying and, you know, screaming, not knowing what their faith is going to be. I believe that if someone went up there and took a look at that situation, I believe they would leave there. If they want to get a Clotilda experience, let them go up there and take a look at that.
Give them a minute.
So I think, I think right in there is where we can really have an exhibition for, and I think people from around the world would want to go up there and see how those people were dumped off out there in the, into those swamps and had to stay up there for days before they came up to rescue them. Just a suggestion.
Well, what is evident and clear, crystal clear, is that there is a lot of momentum and a lot of energy from members of the council and the mayor and this administration to do what's appropriate and to do what's right, and really do a great job there in the Africa Town community. And that's a message that those citizens are not really used to hearing. And so I'm proud to hear all of this dialogue. And if there any other member of the council that would want to talk about their Africa Town dreams and initiatives, I don't mind listening. Ms. Gregory, Mr. Dave's, Ms. Rich?
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you said it right. All of the council members are certainly behind this effort that is way long overdue. I'm very excited to, you know, feel the excitement and hear of the involvement. You know, obviously, one of the most important things, or maybe the most important thing, is to honor the descendants and to tell the story. And then everybody's got great ideas about how we go about doing this, from theme park to replicas to the viewing towers. So as we go forward, I think everyone will see this city on board. It is not just a city story. It is state, national, worldwide. And it will mean so much for this city going forward, that we are the home to the Clotilda, and we have that story to tell. It's a very important story of what happened to those people who were on board that ship. So I just look forward to being a part of it, and I know everybody else does, too.
Now, we do have two very exciting projects on the way. The first one being the Africa Town Heritage House, which is a joint project between the city and the county, Commissioner Ludgood, Mayor Stevenson's been instrumental. I've been working with it. That will come first. And then, of course, the Africa Town Welcome Center. And the first phase of that will kick off hopefully soon. So citizens and stakeholders and even tourists will very soon be able to see a difference and an upgrade in the Africa Town community. In addition to all of the hundreds of thousands of millions of dollars we've expended already with roadway resurfacing sidewalks, you know, tearing down the Josephine Allen Project, you know, it's already improvements being seen. But from that Africa Town historical perspective, those two buildings will really go a long way.
If I could comment?
Let's get Mr. Dave's first, and then Ms. Rich.
Sure.
Mr. Preston, I would just like to join my colleagues in saying that the story of the Africa Town, and the story of the Clotilda and the founding of Africa Town, and how those people took, took really extraordinarily perilous and unfair circumstances and turned it into a way of life. That's a very powerful story, and I look forward to participating in a broad-based community discussion about how best to tell that story. Thank you.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much. And speaking to the resiliency, I think that is the primary point of how everyone got to this point today, so that we can highlight it and make sure that the rest of the world knows. I know when I read about it in the National Geographic, and also knowing that the Smithsonian Institute is involved and working closely to see everything come up to fruition, that speaks very highly of what is in front of us for us to capture and to make known to everybody. And having their guidance and having their input, I think, really helps our city make sure that it's something that is absolutely stellar at its completion, and whenever that is. And it might take years, but we are moving in that direction, and it's extremely positive. And I hope that the community all across the board, not just in Africa Town, but everyone catches that wave of the significant nature of what is in front of us. Thanks.
Mr. Williams, I just want to offer you the opportunity. I don't want to leave you out.
This is just one of those times when, that we all kind of are saying the same thing in a different way. I think that the less that the council has individual hands been on, on all of this is going to find the future. It's been for too long that there's just too many, too many hands in the pot. And I hope that maybe the Smithsonian, with all its resources, will take a leadership role in this and listen to our local leadership as well. But at the same time, make it a national treasure that it is. And I think that that's when we're going to find the real success, and I look forward to that.
Well, thank all of you for your strong sentiments and your strong... Is there someone else that wanted to speak? Thought I heard. Okay, well, thank all of you. And I know Africa Town is proud. I will make certain that they know of all of the strong support from the council, and of course, they know it from the administration. Ma'am, city clerk?
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved? Second?
Mr. President, I move that all the items on the agenda listed as essential COVID-19 items be approved as essential COVID-19 items.
Second.
Public moved to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearing. Today is a public hearing to the
Public hearing, today is a public hearing to declare the structures at 1913 Andrews Street, 2066 Gibson Street. 2804 Greenback Drive. 526 Helveston Street, 2529 Muriel Avenue, 1530 Northview Drive. And uh, public nuisance is in ordering those demolished.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak during any of these public hearings? If not, the public hearings are closed.
Okay. Public hearing to consider adoption of the 2020, 2021 General Fund Capital Improvement Fund and Convention Center Budget.
Is there, is there anyone here that would like to speak during this particular public hearing?
Yes, we have, um, hold on, we have Mr. Michigan. Oh, we have Mr. Michigan. Present to speak.
All set?
Joe, you're on.
Okay, uh, good morning. Joe Michigan, uh, 9000 Pine Run, 36527. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Board of Directors of Lad People Sports and Entertainment Complex. Where we are continually looking at ways to improve Lad and make the complex as useful. As possible for all the citizens of Mobile. Um, as many of you know, last year, we considered the removal of the North End Zone. Uh, in order to build a permanent stage whereby we could house concerts and other entertainment type venues. Um, however, because of the pandemic, uh, we've kind of shifted gears on that and um, created a, you know, a different set of circumstances. Uh, because of the pandemic and social distancing requirements, we don't feel like it's the time to eliminate seats. Uh, because we have, you know, the biggest advantage of our facility is that we can seat more people. In this social distancing requirement. In fact, we can seat 7,000 fans. Um, with social distancing and social distancing in the right way, that being six feet apart. On all sides, front and rear. So uh, there's no other facility that can accommodate anything close to that number if they use proper social distancing requirements. Um, we can still attract concerts without taking down the North End Zone by bringing in a temporary stage. And it's much more cost effective. Um, because of all this, we've come up with a plan that better addresses some of the critical needs of the stadium, which are locker rooms. Now, every other aspect of Lad has been improved over the years. Uh, major renovations and repairs to the press box, concourse, the lobby and concession stands. The only feature that has not been approved is, improved is the locker rooms. Uh, they haven't had anything done to them since the stadium was built in 1948. And it hampers our ability to attract, you know, big time football games. Uh, because currently, we have to put tents and tables outside of the locker room. To provide for medical needs, taping and coaches meetings. So we've received, we've gone ahead and had a floor plan done for new locker rooms in the North End Zone. And we have pricing from a local contractor of a million, $150,000.
Joe, that's your time.
Beg your pardon?
That's your time. The, um, but it just.
That's all of your, your time, Mr. Michigan.
Okay, I don't have another minute?
No, sir.
Well, uh, on the, well, today.
To match the county's funding of $500,000.
Can he repeat his request at least?
Right, well, yeah, cause you, you, you said it now. Come, come on back, Mr. Michigan. And repeat that so that we know what, what you really, what you're really here for.
Okay, I'm here to ask y'all to match the county's funding of $500,000 to build these locker rooms. They'll be bigger, they'll be more efficient, and the county has secured, we've secured 500,000 from the uh, county. And we're asking you to match their uh, their amount. Can I keep going?
No, sir.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. President?
Unless there's questions from members of the council. Mr. Vice President?
Uh, uh, thank you. I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Michigan a question.
Come on back, Mr. Michigan.
I'm here.
Yeah, I understand that you said that the county had uh, given you all 500,000. Is that for this upcoming year budget? Or what? And if so, when are y'all anticipating trying to do this?
It was in the county's last year's budget, and as soon as we obtained the additional funding, we're ready to start. And we'd like to be able to complete this by the spring so that we can have some additional football games that we've had interest in inquiries about.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Rich?
Thank you. Um, if I could ask Mr. Michigan. Um, the council received a letter, um, and we directed it up to the uh, Sports Commission. Which made sense because they were talking about utilizing the facility. Do you have others that you know about that are interested in either having more games, football or soccer? If it's a multi, can, can the field be multi, or does it just have to be football? Like what, what are your assets that would uh, utilize the locker room?
Okay, well, soccer can be held here. We have had a soccer event here in the past. Uh, in addition to the letter that you received, which I believe is a HBCU All-Star Game. We still have on tap the Gulf Coast Classic, which is scheduled to be played in the spring. And we're still listening to other games as well.
And, and were improvements to the locker room always part of um, the needs that were very visible? When we were debating um, the future of the facility a couple of years ago? Was that, was it already known that it's archaic or, you know, was the city aware?
Yes.
Uh, it was. In fact, the mayor was out here and basically it was his idea to build them on the north side of the stadium. And we're able to utilize those existing slabs out there for additional cost savings. And um, and limit the amount of site work we have to do. And so we're, you know, taking every step to save as much as we can and build a, a class facility. That by the way, is going to be 1,250 square feet larger for each locker room. And also, it will allow the teams to enter the field from the north side as opposed to underneath the uh, the west side stand. So it's a.
And you have drawings and plans, and you have drawings and plans already completed, did you say? Did I get that correct?
We have a floor plan. We're waiting to get the actual drawings done till we have the permit for the funds.
Okay. Thank you very much for the additional information.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Davis? Oh, I thought you were right. My, my fault. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Uh, I have one question for Joe and then one for the administration. My question to Joe is, he did not mention the, the Mobile Alabama Bowl game. Does, does he have information on that, that, that they are not going to have their game at Lad?
Uh, we don't have any information. We have had talks with them. But the pandemic has caused some concerns about, you know, when they will have the game. But yes, we have been in talks with them. In fact, they are the ones who initiated some of this locker room talk. They uh, probably wouldn't play here if we can't build these locker rooms.
Who, who, who is that, that wouldn't play here?
The Lending Tree Bowl.
Mobile Alabama Bowl game.
Is, is that the one that the city gives a great deal of resources to?
Million dollars to, yes.
That's correct.
Well, uh, I, I'm not going to, well, there's no need me going down that road. I, I've told them. And I let my colleagues know uh, that if, if they ever come to the inclination. Uh, that our city football stadium is not good enough for them to participate in, then I'm not going to vote to give them a dime for the game. Not one dime. We, we give a million dollars to that particular game. And so if our stadium isn't good enough to play in, then uh, then I would like to see them go wherever they can go, get another million dollars from another municipal entity.
And as I was saying, I had a second que, uh, comment.
Uh, Mr. Williams, I'm sorry.
May I continue?
Absolutely.
The um, the administration obviously knows about this, but had a visit out there. I would like to hear from the administration on, you know, what they're, um. You know, we're right on the eve of this budget. I did not hear about that in the comments. Uh, is there room in the budget? Is there a recommendation from the administration for this?
So I've actually done a couple of walkabouts uh, out at uh, Lad trying to determine how is uh, an investment out there. Kind of a pay-as-you-go deal so that you don't spend too much money and, and waste it. And so this is something that uh, um, Mr. Michigan and I talked about. Uh, I was not aware that it was imminent. Matter of fact, I didn't know that he was going to bring this up until I got a text over the weekend. So we did not build anything into the budget for this. Um, so it's, I'm not even surprised about the progress they're making. But um, just was caught a little bit short on uh, making it part of the budget request.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
If I could comment?
Mr. Williams and yes, Ms. Rich?
Thank you. As far as the lending tree, and I'll need to stand corrected on this, but the obligation of paying them that significant amount of funding. This is the last year under that contract. Do I have that correct? Somebody?
This, Mr. Williams or Mr. Mayor?
That, uh, this is Paul.
Yes, sir.
This, this is Paul. That is, that is true. There's uh, some ambiguity in that contract. Um, it is captioned as a six-year contract, but it uh, describes seven years' worth of payments. Um, so not knowing exactly who drafted that contract. Uh, because it was, you know, some time, time ago, it was before uh, Mayor Stimson's administration. Um, but erring on the side of uh, of uh, believing that it may have been an error on the city's part. And has created an ambiguity in the contract, at most, uh, it has one more year.
Cause it would be nice to put that funding into the facility so that we could keep making the improvements that we've started. To make that a viable stadium and an asset in the community.
All righty, uh, any other questions or, if not, Madam City Clerk?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Michigan.
Thank you.
Uh, we have. Reggie Hill joining. Okay, Mr. Hill. Uh.
Are you on?
Mr. Hill, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Okay, okay. So um, this is a public hearing on the budget, so um, your comments will be uh, toward the budget at this time and limited to three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Uh, Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Stimson. Citizen stakeholders in Mobile, Reggie Hill, 1007, um, Center Street. Uh, I'm going to discuss different elements of the budget here. I'll try to identify them best by pages. As well, I would recommend to the council to look at the 2.3 section of the CIP ordinance that probably would allot the 500,000 that's needed for Lad People Stadium. Uh, I want to begin by commending uh, for collective effort between the council and administration. Uh, for 11.6 million dollar increase of tax revenue. Kudos on that compared uh, for fiscal year 20. Um, on page three, uh, I'm not understanding the increase in revenue for building demolitions and inspection permitting. So I'm hoping that within the next couple of weeks, while this is being labeled over, we'll get some answers to that. On page four, I would suggest a deduction of $53,124 from police fines. And $265,714 from bond forfeitures. This leaves both of those at 400K and 250K, still substantial amount of money. Uh, we need to quit predicting that our citizens will act lawlessly, um, especially when we have ample evidence of the same actions from the police department. Um, I would like a little more clarity as to why we are mostly decreasing personnel resources while increasing operating resources. If you look at page five, until we receive the reporting as required by chapter 38 of the Mobile Municipal Code. I believe it will be in the best interest of the city to deduct $339,906, keeping the Mobile Municipal Court at 2.9 million. I'm also deduct 78,486 uh, from legal, keeping them at 1.8 million. Uh, deduct 31,374 uh, from Mobile Film Office. I'm sure that there are some grants out there and that will still keep them at 400K. That other allotment over 2 million and 1.8 million as suggested. Um, I would actually like to have an increase to the city clerk's office of $39,227, totaling them at 765K. Uh, put that 1,725 back in for city council, totaling them the same year's last budget. Um, I'd like to use some of that finance administration funds towards operating funds for grant management. They've done a good job securing grants. I think we can get some more in. Um, until I see an evaluation, I won't know the benefits, but it seems that very alarming on page six to see this annual increase of municipal enforcement. When the communities that are most underserved are getting their areas demolished. Uh, please define the Bill Mobile Services. Uh, page eight, I would like to deduct 789,792 dollars from the Police Administration Services. Keeping them at 7,875,326. Deduct another 573,000 from the Police Cyber, which keeps them still at about 2.1 million. All right, so Mr. Davis always suggests that we need to have our resources where we would deduct, if we want to see increase in transfers. So my total transfers, I would like to see um, 81,000 dollars for the city council. This would uh, bring up from the, a lot of them out for discretionary funds to have 75K in each district. Uh, the 39,000 municipal city clerk's office, 1 million for parks and recs, and 1 million for additional performance contracts. The cuts made total 2,121,452 dollars. So we would still have an excess of 10,000 dollars remaining from the amounts that have been proposed. I'll send those. Yes, ma'am.
That's your time.
Oh, my problem. I'll send this over to the office. Thank you for giving the floor.
Okay, I'll put you back in the waiting room for agenda items after this.
Yes, ma'am.
Those are questions, I'm sorry.
Is there, is there any questions of Mr. Hill? Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No problem.
Okay. Uh, that is all that we have for um, public hearing. No, Mr. Hunt is not on.
Okay, let's go.
Okay. Um, essential COVID-19 items held over. 02027 ordinance to amend the rules for communications with the council.
Uh, I think we've got to get Reggie back on for his agenda item, right?
Um, those come after, um.
Well, that was a public here. I'm sorry. You're right.
That was a public here.
I'm, yeah, I just want to make sure. Sorry about that.
Uh, Mr. President?
Ms. Gregory?
On the rules, um, I'd like to move that we lay this over for another month. So that we can take it back to committee and see if there's not some way for us to reach some sort of resolution to what the council would like to see done.
I'll second that.
Been properly motioned and seconded. Uh, that we, we laid this particular item over for a month. Send back to committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Okay, if there are no objections, I'll take the remaining items altogether. 63028 ordinance to amend chapter 63 of the city code to establish requirements for wrecker services and participation on the wrecker rotation list. 08622 and 623 are approving purchase order to Atlantic Video Corporation for video wall panels. And for CDW Government LLC for 45 iPad air tablets for the fire department. 08624 approve item-based bid for hidden disposable coveralls. 21625 authorized service contract with Potter Co. Rentals for portable toilets for various city facilities. 21627 authorized contract with Robert J. Baggett for cruise terminal parking deck structural repairs. 40630, 631, 632, and 633 are declaring the structures at 2910 Berkeley Avenue, 1808 Brownlee Street, 480 MacCarley Street, and 2353 Hart Avenue, public nuisances and ordering those demolished.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. On all those particular items, all those in favor? No, any discussion?
Thank you. If I could comment, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Nick, thank you. For 63028, I mentioned it last week on the first read for the towing ordinance. I just want to thank everyone who helped to uh bring this to fruition. That was, of course, the Committee of Public Services and also our former attorneys Cochran and Kumanas, our current uh City Council Attorney, um, Aldridge, and also um Wanda Ramon from the City um Legal Department. And and I know that our city's legal department also reviewed everything. It touched a lot of hands. We worked with the industry and it was a long time in coming, but I think that it uh helps to clarify and uh again, I just want to express my appreciation for um, the willingness and that it took so long. Um, was a bit unfortunate, but we're, we're concluded and watch before us. I hope that everyone will support. So again, I do want to give my thanks to everyone who helped um write this and get this to the point where it is. Thanks.
And and we want to thank you, uh, Councilwoman Best Rich for your valiant effort uh in leading this discussion. It's been uh contentious at times and for us to finally have a document that hopefully everybody at least likes and respects, whether they love it or not, probably won't happen. Uh, we are appreciative of your uh great leadership in bringing this issue to, to rest.
Well, thank you, but it really was a lot of other people.
Yes, ma'am. All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Essential COVID-19 item 01642 through 09661.
Motion to suspend the rules and allow immediate consideration of 01642, 21646, 37649, 650, 651, 652, 653, 654, 655, 656, 657, 658, 376609661. And is there another one? Did we, didn't we add one?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, we did. Uh, that would be 03662.
03662.
And that's the appointment, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Been properly moved in second. Uh, any discussion? Have some in the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay. 01642 authorized agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation for traffic control signals, intelligent transportation systems and network systems at locations throughout the city. 21646 authorized contract with Goodwood Mills in Kwood for Michael Figures Park improvements. 37649 recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer on off premises license for Applebee's Express on Airport Boulevard. 37650 recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Holiday Inn Airport Mobile on Spring Hill Memorial Drive South. 40651, 652, and 653. 654, 655, 656 are declaring the structures at 2066 Gibson Street, 2804 Greenback Drive, 526 Helveston Street, 2529 Mural Avenue, 1530 Northview Drive, public nuisances and ordering those demolished. 58657 assess cost for removal of weeds, Weedling Group 1602. 60658 determine appropriation to the Mobile Museum of Art for an exhibition serves a public purpose and approved payment. 37660 recommend approval to the ABC Board for a special retail more than 30 days license for Hancock Whitney Stadium Stadium at 500 Stadium Drive. And 03662 appoint Richard Rose to the Police Citizens Community Relations Advisory Council.
So moved.
Second.
And properly moved in second. Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item was laid over two weeks.
09661. Approve the 202020 2021 General Fund, Capital Improvement Fund, and Convention Center Budget.
We'll lay over two weeks.
Second.
Properly motioned and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item was laid over two weeks.
That will be September 22nd.
No. Two weeks, 15th.
That's correct. That's correct.
That's correct.
Yes, you're, you're correct, the 15th. Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Um, we have uh Tim Wills, the CEO of Boys and Girls Club. Mr. Wills, you will have um five minutes to address the council. Please give your name and address.
Thank you and good morning, everyone. Tim Wills, CEO of Boys and Girls Clubs, 1102 Government Street, Mobile 36604. I did want to come today just to provide a quick update about Boys and Girls Clubs to the council. Um, so you know what we've been doing since March and then where we're going, uh, going forward. You know, when COVID started in March, um, around March 18th, we launched virtual programming um for young people in the community. Not just for Boys and Girls Club members, for any member that is in the community. Um, through that, we created just over 300 videos uh that focused in on mind, body, and soul, STEM activities for kids to do at home with their parents, and a Let's Read Mobile program uh where we have folks from around our community read books to kids um each night. That invitation for each of you is open if you would like to read a book for our Let's Read Mobile program. Um, those videos can be found on our YouTube page. Uh, we did provide grab-and-go meals and as well as some 1,200 phone calls per month to families to check in to make sure that they had access to the resources that were available in town. Uh, we're continuing those uh phone calls each month, um, especially now that school um is virtual for these next nine weeks. Um, around May 11th, we begun uh opening our facilities on a rolling opening uh to provide first and foremost services for uh essential personnel. And then um by June, we opened it up to any kid that needed access to childcare. Uh, we continued that through August 21st for families here in town. Over the summer months, we also had a virtual programming, uh, so we had about 400 kids virtually in our summer program and about 400 kids spread throughout our facilities and in-person programming as well. Um, through it all, um, to date, we've only had one COVID case involving a kid, um, and that was before um, they returned to our facility. So um, all of our uh procedures and processes are in place and were approved by and consultation with the Mobile Health Department. Um, so right now, school is virtual and so uh this is what we're doing. Uh, teens, uh, we are opening our facilities from 4:00 to 6:00 PM for teenagers um at $30 for the school year uh to have a place to come. Uh, we'll have access to tutors and others who may need uh those services. And then starting today, we opened what we're calling Learning Resource Centers. Um, our clubs are open from 7:30 AM to 6:00 PM uh for young people who, one, need a place to go uh to do their virtual learning. We know that um access to internet or devices may not be uh suitable to all kids at this moment and not all students have received devices at this point. Uh, they're still making their way here. Um, so at our facilities, uh, 7:30 to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, our Learning Resource Centers are open and staff with uh staff members to help kids with their virtual learning. I'm actually at one of our facilities this morning and helped a couple of kids get onto their Schoology platform uh to get started this morning. Um, in the evenings, we're also offering device boot camp, so if a kid and a parent need some help getting um started on their devices to get ready for their virtual classes, uh, we have staff available to help them uh get up and running for that programming as well. Um, all this, you know, is done with the support of the city uh through our performance contract, um, as well as um our partners at Osto, the community foundation, and United Way. And so uh with their support, we're able to help supplement some of the calls, some of the weekly calls for families who really need it the most. Um, outside of that, I'll also announce that uh, you know, last week, I believe it was, we received word from the Alabama State Department of Education uh to continue funding uh for our Gill Yard Elementary Site. And so uh the state uh has agreed to another three years of funding for that site to cover the cost of the school year portion of that site operating. And the city performance contract covers the cost of the summer um site operating there. Um, and I know early in the conversation, we talked about Africa Town, and in December, we opened a site in Mobile County Training School to provide services for kids in the Africa Town community. Um, so lots happening at Boys and Girls Clubs. We're still open for business, serving kids both virtually and in person. Um, but first and foremost, to any family or parent out there uh that's having any issues, can't get through your school or through the system, uh stop by our local Boys and Girls Clubs. We'll be able to help you get started um and get you on your pathway. With that, that's my update about Boys and Girls Clubs, if there was any questions.
Go on.
Any, any questions of uh Mr. Wills?
Ms. Gregory? Um, just to make sure I'm on. Tim, if you would uh send us a rundown of all of what you just talked about, especially the times and locations for uh the resources for parents and children, um, we can add that to our newsletter. I think it's really important to get the word out about what you're offering for the parents and the students as well, especially helping them to get on their devices and learn how to do it. So if you can send that to us, we can include that in our newsletters and um hopefully also link to uh you all through our Facebook page.
Absolutely.
Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President?
Yeah, Ms. Wills, uh, thank you so much for uh coming on and informing us the council. I did get the news on last week about the extension at Gill Art uh Elementary School and that was, that's great news for the uh South DIP area. So that grant is what it extended to out to 2023?
That is correct. It'll be through uh September of 2023.
Okay, then. And as far as in this year, now I guess what there will also would be continued programs of, like Ms. Gregory said, if you can just send that to us, if I can make sure I can put that in my newsletter, if I can make sure that all the residents does have the information. And again, I do appreciate you uh so much. Uh, that was great news what I heard um last week about the extension of the uh grant and also like to thank my colleagues um and also Reverend Manzi, because uh Reverend Manzi is the one that uh helped start off the uh Gill Yard Elementary School uh since I've been on the council. And that's one thing that the people of South DIP have been crying about years was another is to do. And uh with the help of, you know, Reverend Manzi and my colleagues and also you just staff, uh, Mr. Wills, we're making brighter paths for the youth down there on South DIP. So thank you all so much.
And uh appreciate all your, your great leadership, Mr. Vice President. Was happy to work with you back then when I was a school board member uh to get that going. And I'm just happy to see you all continuing the great progress and it's a year-round program and really something I would, I would love to see emulated in certain communities uh in my district, Mobile County Training and Florence Howard, and and I'll be having some conversations with Mr. Wills to see if we can, can accomplish that goal. So thank you, Mr. Vice President. And Mr. Wills, uh outstanding presentation. Keep up the good work. Uh, please send us that information so that we can make certain as many parents know that that level of resource is available and free uh for their uh taking. So thank you for a great presentation.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, sir. Mr. Wills?
Yes, sir.
I've, I've, I, I too uh appreciate your presentation. I just want my other council members to know that the largest boys and girl, girls club uh in the city is the Kiwanis Boys and Girls Club in District One. That, that is also probably the most isolated Boys and Girls Club in the city. It's not easy to get to. It's off the beaten path. And in that regard, uh, I've received a message from uh Mr. Corey Penn, who was the manager of that club over there, uh regarding some directional signs to help people find their way to the Kiwanis Boys and Girls Club. Uh, I intend to get back with him today and uh I agree with him 100%. It is difficult for people to find. There's not enough signage out there to show them what to do, but I will be working with him on that so we can correct that situation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Wills. Uh, okay, we have Reggie Hill. Uh, Reggie Hill regarding agenda items and it's agenda items 02027, 01642, 08643, 08644, 08645, 31647, and 21648. Mr. Hill, you have five minutes. Uh, oh. Thought I clicked them in.
And we really do need to reorder this next week. It doesn't do any good for the talk now. You know, so just being fair, if it's maybe all agenda items that are not gonna be, you know, not voted on this week, but that's why I thought it was stuck in between. Um, you know, I'll let y'all figure it out.
Okay.
But, but I, but I see what you're saying, Mr. Williams, and and we'll work to get it cleared up. Uh, Madam City Clerk?
Uh, Mr. Hill, you'll have um five minutes. Please state your name and address.
Thank you, uh, Madam City Clerk. Uh, to Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Stimson, citizen stakeholders, uh, Mobile. Good morning again, Reggie Hill, 1007, uh, Center Street. Um, I'm going to speak on those agenda items that were submitted to the City Clerk's office. I'll begin with 02 dash 027. Um, I see that it's going to be cool, but since it's on the agenda today, I still would like to address um the matter. I believe it's completely fair to ask for speakers to submit uh non-agenda questions um by Friday. Um, I also believe it's completely fair to ask speakers to submit um agenda item questions by Monday. Um, I, for the past couple of weeks, I have been going in compliance with what the committee has suggested that uh citizens and speakers should do. But the main point that I want to address here is something that was kind of echoed by uh several of the members of the council earlier today is the importance of recognizing this is a meeting for the citizens. And I think if we get away from that, we're gonna miss the opportunity to actually solve the issues. And there was also something else mentioned by the counselor from District Seven. Uh, I believe that we should be working before the meeting so that we can get things done and it's not having to be presented in the public forum. I think if we actually had a better level of transparency, we wouldn't be having this agenda item on, on, on the matter for business today. Um, next on the 01642, I'm just trying to get an understanding of what are the expectations and have there been um any recommendations on how this will improve safety? Um, I don't know if we've had some type of evaluations done before, if there's some report that the administration has provided to the council, but I'd like to see that accessible um to the public as well. And you all can find these questions um in the email at 08643. I'm trying to understand the idea of the Public Works inventory. We see that the Parks and Recreation Department has now been moved to Public Works, but we're requesting additional equipment for Parks and Recs, as if there's not enough equipment within the entire department to fill the needs of that one window of department. So I would love to have some clarity on that again. I've been submitting questions for months, years, really, and so we're still waiting on responses for, for little things like this that we wouldn't have to bring forth to the public. Um, the, at 08644, uh, where are we with securing the lighting needs for those communities that have um expressed the need for replacements? Uh, we saw where the mayor commented this morning. He mentioned that he was securing lights for the entire city. So I would just like to see something, you know, written that shows that we're really gonna get into those districts. I know you remember me making expressions about the bucket So I would just like to see something, you know, written that shows that we're really going to get into those districts. I know you remember me making expressions about the bucket truck. Finally glad to see that put on the agenda a couple of weeks ago. And now we're seeing where we're going to get the lighting. So we just wanted to ensure that our most underserved communities have those amenities. With 08645, could we get a definition of what the E-Builder is? Possibly the importance of that, of that line item, how it's going to be beneficial, those resources, basically those licenses. We see new license in every nearly every agenda. So we just kind of want to get an understanding of what those means. The 31647, I just want to know how will these resources benefit the city directly? I want to know what is the amount that we're going to receive compared to the amount that we're matching with the city funds and who will this directly go to? So we can get some type of explanation on that. That would be great. And then finally, at 21648, the Ziegler Boulevard Initiative. Is this within the CIP funding? And if so, would that be within the district's discretionary funding or is these, or would this be a part of that Section 2.3 where we saw that there are additional projects that could be allotted based on the council's approval? And so those are my questions for today, and I love a response to any of them, please.
Ms. Gregory.
I'm happy to answer the Ziegler question. The Ziegler widening project is not CIP. It is a combination project of Alabama Department of Transportation, Mobile County, SARPSE, and the City of Mobile, but it is not District Seven CIP. It is citywide. And the money has already been appropriated. It's nothing new. We are just finally getting to the contracts.
Okay. And what portion of the city funding? I hadn't used my five minutes. I hadn't used my five minutes.
Wait, wait, one second. I got it. I got it. I promise. Mr. Hill, you still have time. No one's cutting your time. All I'm saying is it's Mr. Hill's time and we're going to continue to listen.
Thank you kindly. I, I would just like to clarify, or get clarity rather, from, from Councilwoman Gregory who mentioned that city fund portion of it had already been appropriated. I just want clarity on what part of the budget or fund did that, that piece come from? That's all I was asking. I'm glad to see that there are additional partnerships. I think that's how we do better. Get more done within the community. But I just want the clarity on what part of resources from City Mobile are contributing to that.
Okay, we can ask Colonel DeLapp and the mayor and Paul Wesh to be more specific on exactly which pot of money that's coming from. If the administration folks are still on.
Mr. President.
I, I, I know exactly what you're going to say, Mr. Richardson. Go ahead, Ms. Richardson.
This is, this is what we've been fighting against. If Mr. Hill has something to say, let him say it. If he has some questions, put them in writing. He needs to finish up what he's saying before any council member give any comments. It's his, this is Mr. Hill's time. He has all five minutes. He can't use his time of asking us anything. He can submit his questions to us and we'll finish him to answer. He, he can't, it can't be a dialogue.
Mr. President.
He can't bother me either. So I'm, I'm just having, let, if, who are we calling up? Let them finish. And then let's move on. If, if council won't comment then I'm coming.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hill, hold, hold one second. Madam City Clerk. Where, where are we with Mr. Hill's time?
His time has expired now.
Okay, so Mr. Hill, we're going to give you 20, give you 30 seconds to conclude your, any concluding remarks. And then we're going to have to move forward.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say with all due respect to Councilman Richardson, I've been submitting questions.
Mr. Hill, no, no, no. It, it, this isn't 30 seconds for you to rebut, Mr. Richardson. It's 30 seconds to.
I'm not using this to rebut, Mr. Richardson.
Let me finish my statement, Mr. Hill. My, my point is you have approximately 20 seconds now to conclude any remarks you have about what you signed in to speak on. Not about any other comments with members of the council.
Okay, well, I still haven't, I, I still haven't received an answer for that question. I believe this is something that was expressed by Councilwoman Rich as to why we need the engagement from counselors and the citizens who come down to speak. So I just want to make sure that we're utilizing the time and the best answers. If we have questions that can't be asked in a written form, this is why we bring them to the public forum. So that they can be addressed. That's all that I'm saying. And these are pertinent to city business. So it shouldn't be something where we're having this discord about us answering questions pertaining to taxpayer dollars being spent. They're very simple questions. They've been sent in email format. They've been sent in written format. They've been now presented as well. That's my only thing. It's not, it's not against anything that's been expressed. It just needs to be fair.
Mr. Hill, that, that concludes your time. And, and we thank you for your continued interest in your municipal government.
Thank you for you're on the floor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Don't mind, since it did come up, and I certainly don't mind answering questions about Ziegler because it is a huge project. And Mr. Hill did send us an email with his concerns and he itemized each one. If anybody in the administration, Colonel DeLapp, Paul Wesh, can just point out the pots of money where the city's portion of Ziegler is coming from, I think that will take care of Mr. Hill's questions about Ziegler and how it's being paid for. Because there are a number of pots of money that are going in to pay for this project. They may have all left us. So if that's the case, we can get it and put it out.
Well, and I just want to state for the public that may be viewing or hearing this, 98% of the questions that Mr. Hill or any other citizen submits to us for an answer, you, you're looking for an answer from the wrong individuals. Because 98% of the agenda comes from the administration. So if there ought to be any answers to any questions outside of my discretionary resources or my district CIP program, then those answers would, would proceed and be provided by the administration. And so, Madam City Clerk, if we can make certain, and I don't know if it's possible that it's already happening, but if we could make certain that as soon as Mr. Hill's questions are received by your office, that that disseminated to the administration so that hopefully the mayor can instruct some member of his staff to provide these answers for Mr. Hill. Thank you so much. Uh, let, let us continue.
Announcement. Announcement.
Oh, okay. Uh, Mr. Williams. Mr. Davis.
I don't have any announcements, Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
Uh, yes. Uh, we have on the agenda today Resolution 21646 authorizing Goodman, Mears, and Kaywood to complete a design for the entryway to the Figis Park. We don't have a major entryway to Figis Park. So what we I got with the community and what we decided to do was honor this for Rita Fortune, who probably worked over there for more than 40 years. And we're going to honor her with the entry sign. We're going to have a grand entry there. And you can, it's an arch. But we need to, we need the construction design. So we, we are spending $49,000 with this company. Goodwill, Mears, Kaywood, Schuylkill. Complete the design process. And then when we finish that, we will go to the construction part of it. So I am just happy, this has been going on for almost two years. And we, this is progress. And I hope we can get this out before long, get it up for bid and and get the project going because they are asking us about this on a regular basis and are ready for us to complete this project. Thank you.
That's wonderful, Mr. Richardson. Ms. Gregory.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just to update everybody on the short term rentals. Last week, our attorney, Chris Arledge, sent out an updated draft of the short term rentals and we were for an amendment for the short term rentals. And we sent it out to the point of contact for the folks who were interested as part of the industry in having a comment. So we'll be reaching back out to that point of contact to see if they have any suggestions, suggested changes to this draft. Council members also received information on what other cities were doing. I know that was something that everyone was interested in. So if we could just round up all suggested changes, questions, whatever you might have related to the second draft this week, that would be great. We can send it back to to Chris so that he can then rework whatever, you know, we get and continue on. We have laid this over for 90 days, so it's not a great rush, but I just don't want to let it languish and then not have any sort of action moving forward. So again, if you've got any changes, you would like to see any other questions, if you would please submit those and we will be reaching back out to the point of contact for the industry. I mentioned earlier during our pre-conference that the Alabama Department of Transportation has opened bids on the second phase of the Ziegler widening project. They should be announcing the contract awardee very soon and we'll see that on our agenda. This is something that has been going on for 20 years. The money was set aside long ago by the city, so it's hard to remember what pots of money all of this came from. So we are finally to a point where hopefully around November, we'll be able to start the second phase of Ziegler. The first phase is already underway. But the second phase was more difficult, a lot more. Things had to be resolved, including sidewalks and bike lanes. We had to go back and redesign the whole plan to include those. We had railroad issues to deal with. So just a lot of moving pieces and parts, and it took a very long time to get to the point where we are now. So as we go forward and more things happen, I'll be happy to update you all. And I'll certainly be updating everyone who lives out near Ziegler or on Ziegler as to, you know, where we are and to alert everybody as to when construction will begin because that of course will mean some traffic delays that I want everybody to be aware of. So that's all on Ziegler right now. I just thank you all for your patience and willingness to move forward on this.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Gregory. Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much. I would just like to announce, and I will repeat this as we get closer to the November elections, but there are two voting center changes that are long-term centers, not only for state and national, but also for the city council races. But it's taking our Savior Catholic Church, which is on Cody Road, and that voting center will become a Mobile Christian School on Cottage Hill Road. And also the Connie Hudson Senior Center will now become the Cranford Burns. And I imagine postcards will go out. More information will come from the probate court who handles this election on November the 3rd. But people seem to be caught off guard when I first saw that and sent that out as a personal Facebook post. And there are other centers that are changing as well. And I think it's due to COVID so that they have more social distancing area to allow voters to proceed and, and vote in person if they choose. The other thing is the census is coming to a closure soon. I don't know the exact date if anybody does, if they'll volunteer that. But if you have not answered the census, please do that. It's very important to the city for the resources that come from getting those numbers correct. So I hope that everyone has done that or will do that in the very near future. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Preston.
Mr. Davis.
I, I would just to piggyback on Ms. Rich, I, I think it would be very helpful if the clerk could rework with Ms. Steinfeld's or, or the clerks, I guess it's really not Ms. Steinfeld's. The clerk could work with her staff and put this updated voting location list on our joint newsletter that Ms. Latham is, is preparing. I think that's, that's very important news. We need to make sure that people know where they're supposed to vote in November. Thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Rich.
Mr. Vice President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Immediately following this meeting, we're going to have a CIP meeting, committee meeting, talking about agenda items that's, that's come before us real soon. I deal with CIP and again, that would be immediately following this particular meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. There's just progress happening across the length and breadth of District Two. I am just so excited to be a part of it and to see the enthusiasm and excitement and sense of satisfaction that so many of our citizens are enjoying as we work even in the midst of a historic and horrendous pandemic to continue to provide top level city services. So I'm appreciative of every city employee that goes out, whether it's those who handle our trash and our garbage, those who make certain that flowers are planted. This city has really continued to thrive even under these very perilous conditions. I'm appreciative of every minister of any faith that has continued to spread the good news. Because it is good news and we will continue to have good news even under these circumstances. And so I just want to say thank you to anybody who stepped up during these last six months. And you're going to have to continue to do it because we haven't quite got to the end of the tunnel. But I believe we will get there. And I'm appreciative of all of my colleagues, whether it's through Zoom or there in the auditorium at Government Plaza. These are seven of the hardest working city officials that you will find in the United States of America. I dare would go to the UN and put the seven of us up. The ideas we've had, we don't always agree, but we find a way to find consensus, which is the beauty of our form of government. And I think it needs to stay the beauty of our form of government. And so, and let's go to any other announcements. Is Mr. Mayor or any member of your staff, did you all have any announcements?
Mr. President.
Ms. Gregory.
I don't want to continue to beat the dead horse, but you know, Ziegler is very, very important to me, the widening project. Something we've been talking about for years. It's been on the books for 20 years. Got waylaid way back in the day and finally made its way back to the top of the Aldott list. Money was set aside many, many years ago through the Alabama Trust Fund. So that's where the city main portion of the money is coming from. The county is also putting up well over $3 million for the Ziegler project. So I hope that answers anybody's questions about where money is coming from for the Ziegler project. It is a huge citywide project, east-west corridor, help move traffic along. Again, I hope that answers everybody's questions. If anybody had any, any that come before us in the future. If you do, just, you know, send them our way. Happy to answer. Don't want anyone.
I have a question, Ms. Gregory. Do you have all the money you need for Ziegler?
Uh, I believe we do, but we'll add a hamburger to, to weigh in on that, you know. Once the construction portion of Ziegler is complete in about two and a half years, I will be starting some landscaping work, replanting some trees, putting in a lot of things that will be very aesthetically pleasing that will complement what we already have on University and Old Shell because this is an area that leads right into the University of South Alabama campus. So once construction is complete, we'll go back and do landscaping work. And this will be just a huge, huge improvement for the area. Again, it moves traffic east and west and it's an entry point to the University of South Alabama. And hopefully their football program will be growing in the future and people will be driving down Ziegler to get to campus. And this will be a great entry point for them as well as going to Langen Park, which as we all know, has a great plan ahead of it and a lot of improvements in store. So can I go on about District Seven? Happy to continue talking about.
You've been doing it. I don't have, I'll sit right here. I'll sit right here and listen, Ms. Gregory. I'm happy to hear all the progress happening in District Seven.
Mr. President.
Mr. Davis.
I just have one final question. And that is where is the funding for the Ziegler project coming from?
Don't open now cattle worms again, Joe.
But, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Davis, Mr. Richardson.
Yes, I, 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 I said as a member of the MPO and I've set the watch hundreds of millions of dollars. of millions of dollars spent west of I-65 and not any spent each of I-65. I will not sit there quietly anymore if I have to travel to Washington, DC. I'm not, I'm not, it's not going to happen anymore. We have widened, I don't know how many streets we have widened west of I-65 and I can't get a dime for St. Jude Road, I can't. They put up every roadblock. When you start talking about during any kind of, this is taxpayers' money. They'll go to Saraland and do 158, they go all to the, all to the streets and highways in Baldwin County, they'll do all of them, but when you mention anything, each of I-65, it's a roadblock. I'm going to unblock that road one way or another. I'm not going to sit there and let that happen to us any longer. I want to be just like Jen, be able to cite the great progress of what they have done to make these streets better east of I-65. And, and, and I think Mobile ought to be like Birmingham, we need to be our own MPO. We are not to be, be tired of, but all these municipalities of all around us, Birmingham has its own MPO and I think we need our own MPO and let the rest of them have their own MPO. Just saying. If you don't plant your seeds, you'll get no harvest.
Well, you planted a seed, Mr. Richardson, you are a seed planter. Everybody's had an announcement, so is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Probably move the second? Any discussion? Absolutely any discussion, all in favor of a journey? Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.